Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order regular city council meeting for Monday, January 13th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country and also for all the victims of the recent events going on around the country. So if everyone would please rise.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
Present.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Okay, next item is number four, approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, January 13th, 2025 council meeting agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Dold. Further discussion from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next, we have a couple of recognitions, and first, we're gonna recognize our grand champion for the holiday lighting contest. This year's winners, Mr. and Mrs. Brown, and they live on Leona Street, and they have been previous runner-ups or honorable mentions three out of the past five years. So they've, they continue to keep adding on and growing, and I've met them a couple times when I was passing out the honorable mentions. And just on a personal note, despite some medical issues, they keep, they keep going out, they keep doing it, and Mr. Brown has an incredible train station in his, in his house. The model train's better than Greenfield Village, so. So I'll read the plaque here. Congratulations to the Brown family of 31917 Leona Street on being named the grand champion of Garden City's 2024 Holiday Lighting Competition. The Garden City Council wants to acknowledge your hard work and enthusiasm in decorating your home to the joy of the entire Garden City community. Your display not only brought holiday cheer to your neighbors in Garden City, but also the many well wishers who stopped by to view your home. For your dedication to the holidays and for bringing delight to people of all ages, you are hereby recognized as a 2024 grand champion. Congratulations. Mr. King wants to take the picture. And now I'd like to call up Police Chief Bob Arnaski.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm honored tonight to be here to recognize the bravery and the selflessness that these three individuals showed on October 6th, 2024. Mr. Michael Johnson, Officer Gregory Goodbred, and Officer Jonathan Marcian encountered a fire in an apartment on that night. Excuse me, Mr. Johnson lives in the apartment complex, and he noticed a fire from his apartment. He immediately left his apartment and began banging on doors to get people out. The way that the structure is, the apartment that was on fire only has one exit and one entrance, and you have to go up a flight of stairs to get to it. That's where the fire was, people could not get out. Officer Goodbred and Officer Marcian responded, they were the first two officers on scene. As they approached, Mr. Johnson let them know that there was still somebody trapped inside the apartment that was on fire. Without thinking, these three brave people immediately ran into the apartment, up the stairs towards the fire, to get the person that was trapped inside out. In order to do so, Officer Goodbred had to kick down a door that was basically bolted shut from the other side. Once that was done, the smoke started to billow through, but they were able to get the person who was trapped out. They took them downstairs, everybody got out, everybody successfully came out alive. So it was quite, I have some quotes from the fire chief here. Basically, "Their swift and courageous efforts in assisting a resident escape a house fire directly contributed to the survival of the individual involved." The fire department noted that conditions, conditions were worsening upon their arrival, and had it not been for the decisive actions of these officers, the outcome could have been tragic." So that was the email that was sent to me. After getting that email, I felt that they needed to be honored with more than just a pin for their badge, but actually with the plaque and some note in front of the public to say what they did. So I also made a video, because I don't speak so good, and sometimes what I say isn't so clear, but the video really shows you what they did to save this person. So if we could play the video?
Kathy, can we confirm if there is a subject trapped?
We don't know, right? No. Fire extinguisher, who's got fire extinguisher? Who's got fire extinguisher? They're saying somebody's trapped. Affirm, they're saying she's stuck upstairs. What's that, where's she at? She's upstairs. Is there a window? There's another entrance, there's another door, you have to break it down. Come on, come on through this hole. Come on. Come on, come on, come on. You're the only one in there? Go ahead, boot it, boot it. Two doors, though. Jennifer, are you here? We're forcing entry. Come on, come on through this hole. Come on. Come on. Come on, sweetie, come on. You're the only one in there?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna get you, we're gonna get you.
We're gonna be okay.
Let's go. Let's go. Come on, sweetie. Okay? Yep. Six, what we got?
Kathy, got her.
You know what else is inside?
No, no.
Take her, let's check.
Kathy, can we confirm if there is a subject trapped?
As you can tell by the video, three very brave individuals, and I know the police chief expressed his pride in them. Garden City Council, on behalf of us and the residents, we'd like to thank you also for your bravery and your heroic actions. So with that, Mr. Chief. Okay, item six is state and county officials, and I don't believe I see any. We have no presentations. Community events, I'd like to call up Kiwanis President, Ms. Joanne Rodriguez.
Good evening. Of course, my name is Joanne Rodriguez, I am the president of the Garden City Kiwanis. The Kiwanis is celebrating a hundred, their 100th anniversary this year, and the Detroit Club that started the Kiwanis is still hard at work in Detroit. The Kiwanis organization supports children locally and worldwide. The Kiwanis is hosting, exploring the possibilities in Kiwanis and Garden City, an open house on Wednesday, January the 29th, 2025, at the Odd Fellows Hall, 1621 Merriman Road, Garden City, from 7:00 to 9:00. We will be featuring organizations we support, including Storytime To Go at the library, CS Mot Family Services, Kids Against Hunger, and many more. You can, can enjoy some finger foods, talking with Kiwanis, while considering joining our organization either as a corporate or individual membership. There will also be a bake sale with the proceeds going to the Key Club at the Garden City High School. Also, on Saturday, March the 8th, at Radcliffe Center, we'll have our annual pig race fundraiser. Tickets are $20 for the event, and will be on sale soon. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Okay. Item nine is petition and communications, we have a master plan open house discussion. Mr. Miller, our community development director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, also Happy New Year. This is, I'm here to invite the council and of course, all the community residents and business owners to come to an open house regarding the amendment to the master plan housing component. We're having an open house here at City Hall on Thursday, January 20? Jan- 23rd? I wrote down the 5th, sorry. January 23rd, 2025, from 4:00 to 6:30. And at 6:30, there's gonna be a summary of all of the information that we gathered during the open house. It's up there on the screen also, it's also on the web for people to see. But some of the topics to think about for housing in the future of the city are about density, housing types, appropriate locations for the city. Also, this open house is being hosted again as part of the requirements for community input, but also that we want to seek input for these amendments to the housing component of the master plan. We're also going to be updating the technical data in regards to housing, so family size, living arrangements, education, income, and also tenancy, who owns, who rents, where those units are. Also, the amendment is, a part of the process is being paid for by the Housing Readiness Grant from MISTHA that the city received, and we're using McKennan Associates to do the open house, and then also to make the recommendations for the amendments to the master plan, and we'll use those hopefully going forward when we seek all the input and what is going to look, you know, what Garden City will look like going forward regarding housing, we can use that for ordinance amendments. And as you think about housing, I always say that, you know, we can't grow our boundaries, so we have to figure out how we can redevelop and utilize the property throughout the city to get more housing and get more residents to come here and live. So please join us next Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, from 4:00 to 6:30, and you can come for just a few minutes, drop in, or you can come and stay for the entire time. Thank you.
Thank you. Should be interesting. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. Item 11, consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
Like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, 1 through 4, including 4A subsection, sub I, as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotis. Further discussion from table. From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Onto the action items. Item one is a lot split at 29527 Balmoral. Mr. Miller.
Good evening again. This is for a lot split at 29527 Balmoral, that's on Balmoral just west of Middlebelt, and what we're seeking a request from the council to do is to kind of reestablish the original platted parcels that were there on Balmoral in the Steffner subdivision. This will be to permit the construction of four houses on those four lots, actually two on the lots that are being split, and then the person who's acquired those two lots also has the two lots to the east also. So again, it takes a council action to do a split of the lot, it doesn't take a council action to combine a lot, though, which I think is a little odd, but that's, that's the rules that we have to live by, and at one point in time, these all were four lots, four different tax ID numbers. So what we're asking is to really return it to plat and to permit another tax parcel ID to occur out there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotis.
I'm just curious, I have one question. Is it four houses in a row or behind each other, or?
It's going to be four in a row, starting from the east and then going west, four houses. And actually, when, when the, these four houses get built, that Steffner subdivision will be fully built out.
Thank you.
Motion is in order.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, who said that? Council. Councilmember Dold.
I'd like to motion to approve the lot split at 29527 Balmoral, parcel ID 35007040078000.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotis. Further discussion from table. From the public. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Item two is Ford Road and Merriman, a request for rezoning, and I will call up Mario Ortega.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before you tonight is a request to rezone the property at the northwest corner of Ford and Merriman Roads. The site is actually comprised of two lots. The south lot is 31406 Ford Road, which is located at the corner of Ford and Merriman, and it is currently zoned C2, community business. The adjacent lot to the north is technically 5651 Merriman, which is at the corner of Ford Road and Crowder, and it is currently zoned R3, multiple family residential. Currently, this entire site, the entire property is a vacant grass field. Previously, it had, it was occupied, it was developed as a commercial business, but that has since been demolished. So this entire site we're looking at is two-thirds of an acre, approximately in size. So the applicant is requesting that both these lots in combined be rezoned to C3, general business. So on December 12th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding the proposed rezoning. At that public hearing, there were no written comments provided, and no in-person comments or questions were actually made. So the Planning Commission, after considering all the issues, has recommended that the city council approve this rezoning of the entire site to C3 general business based on consistency with the goals and objectives of the master plan, consistency with the future land use map in the designation for this property within the master plan, and the ability of this site to comply with the development requirements that would be applied in the C3 district. So before you is a proposal to approve that rezoning, and I will take any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Carefotis.
You meant Merriman and Crowder, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then you said nobody came to the meeting. The business right next to that is already C3, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and is there already a plan or an idea what they're gonna do with that property?
The applicant has discussed certain options, one being a convenience store with a gas station, but just like any other development, after this process, they'll have to go through the standards to apply for and receive approval, including, actually, they'll have to coordinate with MDOT, because Ford Road is an MDOT road, and with Wayne County with regards to the Merriman Road access points. So they will have to consider all options and come before Planning Commission to receive approval.
This is a local business owner who likes to develop in our city?
Yes, that's correct. They currently own a, a gas station within the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
I motion to approve the rezoning of 31406 Ford Road, currently C2, community business, and 5651 Merriman Road, currently R3, multiple family residential, both to C3, general business.
Support. Support from Councilmember Witt. Further discussion from table. From the public. Yes, Mayor.
I just had a quick question. I know you already stated that he's kind of intending to do like a community or a convenience store, but like, what exactly kind of falls under C3 business? I mean, I know I can Google it later, but I figured I'd ask right now.
So C3 business is our most high-intensity commercial district, meaning it is envisioned to be auto-oriented, so they could have, on that particular site, they would not be allowed to do, actually won't be allowed to do car dealerships, because we have a requirement of minimum of two acres, so the site doesn't meet that. They could apply for a auto repair, they could apply for a gas station, and they could apply for a drive-through use, in addition to any type of office use, medical professional use, commercial, so basically all the uses that we are generally allowed within the city, commercial businesses.
Thank you. Further questions from the public? Yes, Mayor.
Are you saying that's?
Can you please?
I'm just curious, I thought you mentioned that this property was originally residential? And what, how much of space will you be taking if it's approved from having a chance of having residential housing built?
So the southern half of the property is currently zoned commercial, the northern half is currently zoned multiple family. So the proposal is to rezone the entire site, the entire property to commercial, so the applicant would be proposing the entirety of the development as a commercial use. So, but that's what, we would be losing some multiple family designated zoning, but as you may have just heard, the city is in the process of looking at the master plan and eventually looking at the property zone for residential, to see what other opportunities exist that would be able to accommodate residential and redevelopment. So we'll look at other ones.
Mayor.
No.
Mario, could you maybe remind everybody, when you do, when you have the hearing like that, we send notifications to?
Every, yes, thank you very much, that's right. So there was a public hearing held, and just to let everybody know, all the property owners that are within 300 feet, and all the residents within 300 feet of this site, received a notice in the mail indicating they could come to the meeting and voice their opinion, both for or against. They could also write, send in a written comments via email or a letter, standard letter, that gets written to the official comments that the Planning Commission can hear. In addition, the, the public hearing is noticed in the Detroit News and Free Press 15 days prior. So we do try and make our best effort to make sure to get the opinions, and especially of those that would be directly affected by this rezoning, those adjacent to it. But we hope, we had that public hearing, and no one had the opportunity at that time to make any comments. Just for everyone's information.
Mario, am I correct to assume that the other three corners on Ford and Merriman are C3?
The other two are actually, two of them are C2. The Walgreens is C2, the auto repair is actually technically zoned C2 right now, and then the rally, rally checkers.
Checkers.
Rally slash checkers, is, is C2.
Thank you.
But the entire corner on, at Merriman and Ford, and blocks, two blocks goes to the north and two blocks to the south, and the master plan are planned for C3, so. And you got another question?
Okay, it's just comments, any further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, item three is our HUD grant agreement. I'll call up Ms. Erica Smith, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In your packet is the HUD agreement, a long road to get here. If you recall, it was just under, I'm sorry, just over two years ago when the grant was awarded, and there was many steps that needed to happen to get an agreement in place, that's the execution process to actually move towards doing the project and then being reimbursed for it. So what you have is the agreement that outlines the terms set forth by HUD. There's a little bit of the narrative in the budget revision. You may recall, the original application was geared towards the gym addition, so this is redirecting that to the HVAC project. We don't have a firm cost on this project, we believe it's gonna be around $2 million. In the proposed budget, there is some room to, if, if by chance it comes under that budget, let's say it's at 1.9 or 1.8, we wanted to have room to then continue doing some of the other projects. So you'll see some things listed in the budget chart, there was a construction line, which could be used towards the HVAC if we need it, it also could be used for the gym additions or things that maybe we don't get to fully. So I'll let you ask some questions.
Council have any questions?
Mayor.
Councilmember Dold.
Or Carefotis.
Councilmember Carefotis.
I noticed it, it did mention the bathrooms in there, but we have that other grant for the bathrooms, correct?
Yep, so I mentioned the bathrooms in case we had money, and we don't expect to get to all four bathrooms, so I know for sure if we have extra money.
We can use it for that.
We could keep moving on it, but it's not meant in place of the other funding, the CDBG.
Okay, and then do we have an estimate on when we're gonna have the HVAC?
Yes, they, I believe are in like their 80th percentile of completion of the spec work. As soon as that comes back, we'll be able to go out to bid, and that's when we obviously will get firm. We may discuss with our consultant whether we should go for the boiler first, whether we should do it all in one, we're not sure yet, but we'll be getting some. We're not sure yet, but we'll be getting some expert expertise from our consultant.
Did they give you a timeline saying that we wouldn't be out to bid by March 1st, or bids would be
I'm sorry, a time
Did they give any kind of timeline, like you would have bids out by March 1st, or back in by April 1st, or anything like that?
No, I don't have a timeline right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the HUD grant agreement for community project funding in the amount of 2.1 million to be used towards the Garden City Community Center Rehabilitation Project.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotis. Further discussion from table. From the public. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item four is an engagement letter for auditing services. Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just before you tonight is our yearly audit performed by Plant Moran. This is just an engagement letter to continue that process. They've actually started some of it. But this is the money, we need to do an audit in order to verify to the state that we're financially healthy. It's important for bond ratings, it's important for obtaining shared revenue and all of our necessary funding, and just a good look at our financial health. So Plant Moran has done it for a very long time. They continue to do a fantastic job and are well-known across the region as ideal for doing this type of service, and just requesting the ability to execute that agreement.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dole?
To motion to approve and permit the city manager to sign the attached agreement with Plant Moran, P-L-L-C, to perform the yearly financial statement audit for year ending June 30, 2024, and related services.
Support? Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Further discussion from table. From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We have no other business. Open it up for public comment. This is for non-agenda items only. If you have a question, we'll, if we have an answer, we'll answer it now. If not, we'll get back to you and give you an answer. Anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Jones, please state your name.
You don't know me, Mayor? My name's Mike Jones, I live on Donnelly Street in Garden City. Like to inform the public of four events that are coming up. One is a Valentine's Day senior lunch. Cost is $10. Open to 50 and older people. There would be, lunch will be Lee's Chicken, this will be at the senior center. Another is the trip to the Detroit Institute of Arts, totally funded by the Detroit Institute of Arts. They're providing a bus to and from Garden City. And this is a free trip, but you do have to register in advance. Call 734-793-1870. Third one is the St. Patrick's Day lunch. This will be on Monday, March 17th, from 12 to 2. Corned beef sandwich, coleslaw, chips, dessert, and a green punch. Turkey sandwich is available for those who do not like corned beef. But you must state that at the time of your ticket purchase, the cost is $15. And the last is something to look forward to, coming soon, a taste of Garden City. On Friday, April 11th, it's going to start at 12. Cost is $5. Check back for a list of participating restaurants and registration information. If you have any questions, call 734-793-1870.
Thank you. Anybody else? Former Mayor Randy Walker. Nice hoodie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First off, congratulations to council members that recently elected and re-elected. And I want to give my condolences to Mayor Shawalter's family. He was a great man, a real good man, so our prayers go out to his family. The reason I'm here tonight, I'm going to ask the city manager, if you can invite somebody from the library, just to give us an update, sort of like the DDA does twice a year, they come up. And the reason why I'm saying that, I know you say, just go to the library board meeting, but they're not televised. And I still have a lot of residents calling me or come up to me, hey, what's going on? Are we getting a library? So I thought it'd be nice if you could invite them to come and give an update, how much money is in the building fund? Do they still plan on building on the Berger site? When can we expect a shovel in the ground? Just, just give the residents an update on what's going on with the, with the library. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good 2025, everybody.
Thank you. Good seeing you again. Anybody else? Yes, yes, sir.
Paul Guiz, James Street, Garden City. Concerned about all the traffic in the neighborhoods. Got so many more deliveries now than ever. Got UPS, FedEx, Amazon, Grubhub, all those. And all these people race through the neighborhood to make their time. I'd like to see more police presence in the neighborhood, to look after these people. I see them sitting on Craig Street watching Warren, but that doesn't help the neighborhoods at all. People fly through, run through rolling stops constantly. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mayor?
Linda Skoroff. I was here last month, and I mentioned the issue with vehicles blocking the sidewalk. And after the meeting, when you guys had your say, I thought it was rather strange, and I thought it was rather rude, that nobody said, we'll look into it. Yes, we believe there is a problem, we'll look into it. Nobody said anything. And I'd like to know why we can't even be acknowledged for something that we're saying. We're, I'm not asking you to give me a complete breakdown as to why something isn't happening, but it would have been nice to somebody, for somebody to acknowledge it. There was an officer who came up to me after the meeting, which I greatly appreciated. I don't remember his name, and I had a long talk with him regarding this issue, and he was going to address it. So I'd like to, whoever he was, I'd like to thank him. The other issue is, can't think of it, oh. People don't want to call in regarding ordinance issues or any other issues. They're afraid of being, the repercussions from, from calling in. And it was mentioned just tonight that there is a anonymous part of the website that we can go to?
Fix it for
If you could announce it, so people know that they can make a request regarding an ordinance issue, that would help, be helpful, because a lot of people, and I don't blame them, you don't want to give your name, because you don't know if that neighbor's listening, and you're going to make a complaint, and they're going to find out who did it, and then you pay the price for it. So if, if it could be publicly announced, how to find that part on the website, Garden City website, as to how to report an ordinance issue.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will say this. I guess I'll take responsibility for not responding, but I did see you speak with the officer, so I assumed he was giving you some updates on, on the ordinance and that. But I know the city manager, myself, discussed it afterwards. We probably could have acknowledged that we heard you and we were going to look into it, but
I think people would
We'll, we'll start doing that, but we, we do get together and discuss complaints or, or, not complaints, but issues or questions that some of the residents have. We may not announce it, but we do do that. And in the future, I'll try to acknowledge that. But as I said before, we do, if people, residents have questions, we do try to give them an answer if we have it at the time. If we don't, we don't want to misspeak, so we do look into it. So I will take responsibility for that. As far as the remaining anonymous, I don't know the, the website officially. But I do know when you call into ordinance, anybody that calls in, your, your information is private. It's, it's, if I A resident calls the police department for an ordinance violation, the police officer doesn't go out and say, oh, by the way, your neighbor so-and-so called on you. So how they would find out, I'm not sure, but they, for the most part, it is anonymous. So hopefully that answered some of that. Any other comments from the public? Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And actually, on the note of the sidewalk, so my philosophy is, if we get a public comment, is to hear that comment and then take the time over the two weeks prior to the thing. One is to make sure someone reaches out from, from the city. Officer did that immediately after the meeting. But also then, I think it's, it seemed delayed because of the holidays, but my intention is the very next meeting, which this is the very next meeting, is to address the issues that come up from our citizens. But as the mayor said, it's important, if I don't speak with the police chief and I make a statement about the sidewalks or something like that, that I want to make sure I'm consistent with him, because, you know, even though I may be well-intentioned, if I get it wrong from him, it seems like we don't, we are on the same page, when generally, we're pretty much on the same page. But when it comes to the sidewalk, it's certainly something I know the police department takes seriously, and we take seriously. Though there is a philosophy in Garden City that if you call and someone's blocking the sidewalk, you know, as a police officer for over 20 years, it's easy to sit and just write the ticket. What we've always encouraged our officers in Garden City is to go knock on the door. And there's a good part about that, which is we go knock on the door, let you know to move the thing, and give you a reminder, and hope that when a police officer tells you to move, that's, should fix it. With 99% of the people we deal with, it does. But it doesn't always, and there are those that stick. And one of the problems in the, in, in our system of being nice is that if an officer gets dispatched there a few days later, he may apply the same one, because it's not the same, same officer, and he doesn't realize that somebody has been there a few days earlier. And this is something I've discussed with the police chief, and maybe it's a system fix, where we make sure the officers are checking to see, hey, have we been here before, before I just go knock? Maybe it is time for the ticket. And that's something we're going to work on. But some of our officers on Midnight's, I know, have been over the recent, last month, a couple of months, on Midnight's going through, looking and seeing if they can find vehicles parked over the sidewalk. I know they're out there, but it, but it, and this does stem from my time there, and I know continuing with Chief Arnazki is, is we love to warn and fix the problem rather than ticket and fix the problem if we can. But sometimes you need a ticket, and it's just making sure we get that right. So, but on the issue of sidewalks, you know, it's something we're definitely focused on, and definitely will continue to work on. It is sticky, especially during the holidays, you know. Families, members visit in front of town, a little too many cars at the, at the house, and people aren't as considered as they should be, and we're working on that. So that, that's just that issue. As far as, it's called GC Fix It. It's on our website, but if you just Google GC Fix It, Garden City in the Google, that'll come up. You can, yes, you can submit it anonymously, you know, and certainly, nobody wants to begin a neighbor trouble by calling the police, and then they find out, and now we have neighbors not getting along. But people do want the police to be able to respond to their neighbors when it's hurting their quality of life and their property value. So certainly, that form's available to you. It's very nice to use, actually. It's almost sometimes preferential for me even calling, because you can actually type out exactly what your concern is. It falls into a system that gets tracked very well. It's something I'm a big fan of, is the Garden City Fix It form, so. And I've even talked with communications about even extending it, maybe it isn't just a website thing, maybe it's an app we get, just to make it easier to report issues within the community. But GC Fix It is working. If you Google it, it's there. It's a great resource, you don't have to leave your name and number. It helps if you do, because then we can call you up and follow up and let you know what we've done on the property. But if you don't, that's okay, too. It doesn't mean it won't get tracked, it doesn't mean we won't show up. So all great ways of, of reporting things like that, especially ordinance issues. And that concludes that. But also, yes, condolences to the Shawalter family. There's people who have built this community and make it the great place it is today. He's one of them. You know, I, you know. If you hear the history of people who are working here and stuff, you can always find people who are, you know, big fans of people and people who are not. But Mr. Shawalter, our former mayor's shoulder, is just one of the people, I've never heard a bad word spoken about. No disagreements, just a very kind and well-liked person in the community. All the people that work for him have nothing but amazing things to say about him. So, you know, that, that stands the test of time, and, you know, condolences to his family, and we're, we're sad at his passing. I just want to congratulate the Browns on the grand champion award. It's awesome that they take the time to put those lights up and have a little more merry ever Christmas, and glad that they stuck with it and got the award. I think they were runner-up twice. So, you know, keep with it, you'll, you'll get there if you want it, just keep putting the lights up. And then I just, just, you know, you can't watch police officers doing their job and be a former chief and not just be so thankful for their presence in the community and their willingness to risk their lives. And, and Mr. Johnson, I always said as a police chief, and now as a city manager, our public servants, especially the police and fire, are only as good as the citizens they serve. You know, Mr. Johnson alerting those officers, that's a door no police officer would have anticipated existing to get into that apartment. And without him there to point it out, and then two brave police officers willing to go into a building that's on fire. And then I know the coolest thing, I don't know if you caught it at the end, they were, they'd gotten her out, and they were about to walk out, and the two officers both agreed, all right, let's go check again and make sure there's nobody else in here. Which means, hey, the citizens get out, we're going to stay in the burning building and continue to make sure, even though there were no ports of, that's bravery, that's the heroism we get. And what's funny is those two officers probably went out, wrote a report about what they did, and then went back to serving the citizens, like their night didn't end right there. And they continue to serve, and that's just impressive stuff. So I thank them for doing their job. And I think that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Mr. Smith?
Well, I don't know if I can say it as, as well as City Manager Gibbons just said, but, um, yes. A big thank you to Officers Marcian and Goodbred, as well as the homeowner, Mr. Johnson, for their efforts. Congratulations to the Brown family, and my condolences to the Shawalter family.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Nothing much tonight, just Happy New Year and Go Lions, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dole?
I'd like to give my condolences to the Mr. Shawalter's family. To echo what Mr. Gibbons says, he was an active man in this community. I met him 20 years ago on the Mayor's Committee for Underprivileged Children. My wife and I, I think that's what started the journey that we ended up here. That led us to the Goodfellows, needy families, and things just built up to him. Well, he will be missed. I'd also like to let the community know that the Neighborhood Watch program is starting up again. The first meeting is January 14th, here at the police station, or next door at the police station. I'd also like to mention the Radcliffe Center. There's a lot of good things going out there. If you haven't been there yet, stop in and check it out. I think you have a good time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that the bravery that the two officers and Mr. Johnson displayed are above and beyond what a lot of people might think they would do in those particular situations. And also, for the city to recognize these, these officers' efforts. It's one thing, you know, it happened, and people knew about it, but not everybody knew about it. And I think it's, it's good to recognize people who go above and beyond. And then I want to say Happy New Year and Go Lions.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
My condolences to the family, the Shawalter's family.
Is that all? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dole?
First, I want to say congratulations to our officers and Mr. Johnson. I am always very proud of our first responders in this city, every, every day. And that leads me to the next thing I want to thank. A lot of our first responders showed up at Meyer for us right before Christmas to do Shop with a Hero. And I think that that's very, you know, it's a very appropriate name. So I want to thank them, that was for the Goodfellows. Meyer gives each child $100 gift card to spend out there however they want. Some of the kids spend it on themselves, some of them say they want to get, you know, something for their siblings, and some of them know exactly what they want, and they're back in two minutes, and other ones who are waiting an hour for. So, but every one of them are really thrilled to go shopping with, with a hero. And that is truly what our first responders are. I also wanted to throw a quick thank you out to Gary Carter and his crew for the fantastic job that they did with our downtown. We get other cities, I've, I've had the, the mayor of Westland tell me, you know, how beautiful our downtown is in the winter, and just that they're very envious of it. And he really does a fantastic job with it. So thanks, Gary, for that. Got a few things, sorry. They're kind of And I also want to thank former Mayor Walker for bringing that up about the library. I think that's an excellent idea, and I would, I, I look forward to them coming in and letting everybody know where, where our money is going. So there is that. I also want to apologize to Mrs. Skoroff for not responding to your issue. I, I did hear it, and I took it to heart, but I, you're absolutely right. You should have got a verbal response that night, and I apologize for that. I want to encourage everyone to show up for the master plan. That's where this city's going, that's what we use when we do planning, when we do our zoning ordinances, all of that stuff. So please show please show up. It's very important that we get your input on that. Condolences to the Showalter family. As Jeff mentioned, we first met him with the Mayor's Committee, and he was, he was a fantastic guy. Just always, as Mr. Gibbons, you know, he was very kind. That's just a perfect way to describe him. He was a kind man, and always, always did what we needed him to do, whatever we needed. The only other thing I want to say is Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to working with council, working hard, and working together this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Karafodis?
Yeah, I just have a few things. Some of them I repeat. I'm just really glad to hear that we are having the master plan open house on that Thursday, the 23rd. It's been two years since I asked about the master plan getting updated, and I just want to say thank you to Matt Miller and Tim Gibbons for getting the ball rolling. I'm really looking forward to getting more development in our city, especially housing, so we can reach that 30,000 mark. So, I hope everybody can come out. As Councilwoman Dole said, it's very important to hear your opinions about what you want to come to our city. So, I'm also really looking forward to the workshop for council at Radcliffe on February 5th. Making sure that we're being financially responsible about the money we spend there is really important to me. I hope we can stop spending on anything new at Radcliffe until we have this workshop and we can all get a chance to discuss, you know, the future there. Like Mayor Protem Dole said, I encourage more residents to start visiting Radcliffe. There's a lot going on there. So, if you haven't been there, it's time to go. On that note, long as Erica's still here, I had a couple residents ask me again about the workout room. Is that still just for seniors, or can anybody go?
Actually, on January 21st, there will be evening hours opening for adults 18 and up from 5:00 to 8:00 during the week. So, we are piloting at expanded hours of operation for--
That's awesome. That's going to make a lot of people very happy.
And that went out in a newsletter, so I've got to get you on that, get all of council on our monthly email.
Thank you.
So you can hear that, yeah.
And then I had a couple more questions. We had, not for Erica. We always have everybody come up and talk about events for seniors, and a lot of the seniors at the towers have asked about transportation from the towers to Radcliffe. So, I hope that's something that we're working on. I'm not saying, you know, get a big giant bus, but maybe some of the events that they travel from Radcliffe, they can actually pick them up at the towers, or we can work out some kind of transportation for the seniors to get there, because there's a lot of people at the towers that would like to come to Radcliffe. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was the Senior Alliance here in Western Wayne County. I don't know if all our seniors are getting the help they need, but the Senior Alliance is there, and they provide so many services. They provide caregiver support. You can actually have someone come to your house and check on you two or three times a week. There's no charge for anything they do. They can provide transportation if you have to go somewhere. They can provide wellness checks. They can help with Medicare and the My Choice waiver. They have nutrition programs. If you think you're out of food, they can even get emergency groceries delivered for up to $75. They can also get you signed up for Meals on Wheels, and they have a lot of other food programs. The number to the Senior Alliance is 734-722-2830. And give them a call. You'd be amazed. Even if a senior's lonely, you just want someone to talk, they have a chat program. You can just call and talk to somebody. They can give you different resources. It's a really good avenue for seniors to reach out. And the last thing I wanted to say is about our Meals on Wheels program in Garden City. It's still in dire need of volunteer drivers. So, if you have even a few hours every week to donate, we need drivers so that we don't lose this program. The number to call if you're interested is 734-326-5341. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple things. Again, congratulations to our grand prize winners, and also to our police and the Mr. Johnson for their heroic actions. I'd also like to make, send condolences to Mr. Showalter's family, and also point out that typically when a former mayor of the city passes away, we do lower the flags to half mast. With President Carter passing away, they're already at half mast. So, if it wasn't that circumstance, the flags would be at half mast for Mr. Showalter. So, I just wanted everyone to know that. Also, on February 2nd, Sunday, Joe Dees is presenting the Skip Cowan 20th Annual Charity Broom Stick Pool Tournament. And if you've never seen it, it's pretty entertaining. They use brooms, the stick end, and they chalk it up and play a pool tournament for the day. It's $25 per player, and the proceeds go to our Garden City Food Pantry. And it's really enjoyable. Registration starts at 11:00 a.m. The tournament starts at noon. They have a ton of baskets that they raffle off. They will also have food. And they are at, again, at Joe Dees and Skip Cowan, who has passed away. They've carried on this tradition, Kathy and their staff, and this is the 20th year. So, I wanted to invite everybody out there to that. And with that, we have no further business for that, but we are, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Mayor?
Councilmember Whit?
I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session to receive an attorney-client privilege, written legal opinion to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to MCL 15.268-H regarding Garden City Fire Station renovation contract.
Support for Mayor Protem Dole. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
It's a roll call vote.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Whit?
Aye.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Dole?
Aye.
Councilmember, my thing's outdated. Councilmember Karafodis?
Aye.
Councilmember Dole?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs?
Aye. At this time, we'll go into closed session.
Okay, we're going back in session. I need a motion to-
So moved with.
Support. Support from Mayor Pro Tem Dold. Mr. Smith, take roll call.
Councilmember Witt.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dold.
Aye.
Councilmember Kara Fotis.
Aye.
Councilmember Dold.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs.
Aye. Okay, we're back in session. Per our discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city shall follow the procedural recommendations outlined by city attorney regarding the fire station renovation contract.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Kara Fotis. Mr. Smith, would you take roll call?
Councilmember Witt.
Aye.
Councilmember Kara Fotis.
Aye.
Councilmember Dold.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dold.
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs.
Aye. Okay, it passes. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.